Okay, so we're going to talk about small cell networks. So what is a small cell network? So I kind of came up with some sort of definition. I like the language better. Small, small, low-powered cell network connected to a larger cell network that enhances for broadband access and ground level. So this helps our connectivity with larger, I think that's the main thing, helps our connectivity with future 5G networks and things that will be coming in the future. There are a few different types of cells that we, small cells that we found, residential, enterprise, rural, remote, urban. So we define this as an urban cell network that is being proposed in our city and lots of cities in Texas. The urban small cells offer capacity for dense environments, so that's where we have a lot of cellphone users in one area. So it would be like around a mall, convention centers, it could be Old Town with festivals, things of that nature. Also, this will provide access to the network, access nodes located on existing group poles. So the main use of these will be on existing poles. And where their existing poles don't exist, for the spacing that they need, they'll want to put in new poles to establish these networks. Here's a couple of pictures. One on the left is a kind of a standalone node, probably on the new pole, so it's not co-located in an existing pole. The one on the right is like that, so you kind of have an existing light pole with the added equipment, has a node, and also it's another quarter of those, why?
I get the question. Yes. One on the left, like the standalone, how much of these interfered with by trees, landscaping and stuff like that? So if there were trees on each side of it, like we have down in the median, is that going to interfere with that, or?
I don't think it would very much, but, you know, again, I'm not an expert in this technology, so...
It's not like microwave. It will reduce it a bit, but it's not like microwave where you get a line of sight interruption and it'll take you down.
So kind of, just diagram kind of gives you a little simple view of how this network kind of works. Some access nodes are attached to several types of poles, typically our existing poles in the right-of-way. So they'll have backhaul connectivities, which will be kind of wireless. And then we'll also have a kind of a fiber network as well that connect to your larger cell towers, which will be the, what we call the spectrum on this diagram. So it's a combination of poles, wireless connectivity, but also you will have fiber network. You also will have power sources to this, there'll be electric here, and maybe some ground equipment as well.
And just the fiber can go under the ground, or it can actually also go above?
That's right. The fiber also can be lashed to existing utilities, which are wrapped around existing wiring, is another option that they do have, where it's not considered a new wire. So it's called lashing. So we're foreseeing both to be used in our city. So the chapter 284 is a Texas government code that'll be effective September 1st. The governor signed a Senate bill, 1004, June of this year. This will be effective September 1st. It establishes a new chapter in this code. So it's like a, you know, it's a done deal with the state. So we, we cannot impose a moratorium on this at all. We have to allow, and we have to deploy the state law. It does allow us to establish application and permit processes. We can establish short review, establish times for those applications. And if they are not rejected or approved within a certain timeframe as discussed about in that law, then they're considered approved and they can start work.
And the law's very specific on those timeframes?
Yes. Yes, they are.
Are they shorter or longer than any other right-of-way permit?
They are shorter, because we don't have a, that have a specificity in our...
For our current ordinance, we don't really have any limits. It does establish maximum fees that we can charge, and that seems to be the big issue of all the cities. So we are also amending chapter two of our ordinance to create these fees that are, we are asking for the maximum fees established so long. And also, this does not, the PUC has no oversight at the state level, so if there's any issues with this, it is going to court. So we also cannot prohibit connection to our poles in the right-of-way. The only time we can do that, if it, if we can show that it interferes with the traffic signal, school zone flash, or things of that nature. And certainly if it comes up, I guess after an install, we come up with a new issue of interference, if someone will check reform, I think we could work good with that entity and get it removed, or maybe reconnect it in a different way. We also have the right to have license agreements with each user. And we would have to establish that before they would do the first installation on our facility, so that's just when they use our facilities. This also allows us to use some design standards, as long as they don't conflict with the statute. We can enforce aesthetic standards in the design districts, so it'll be like Old Town, I-35 overlay, will be a couple of examples of current design standards or design districts that we currently have. And so the important thing, and we'll keep saying this, is whatever, whatever's on our books, as far as the ordinance goes, effective September 1st is what we have to use to apply these, because we're assuming we're going to get a lot of applications September 1st.
Okay, I've got another question for you. And I don't know if, actually, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this and make sure I completely understand it. So I know now with cellphone networks and antennas and stuff, they're on the top of hotels, office towers, church steebles and all that stuff. So are these filling in the gaps and just boosting the in-between, they're not replacing those? Is that correct? Or is this a way to?
I think it's going to be both.
It'll replace the towers, you still have the cell towers.
It's a distributed architecture. It could eventually. It's a function of aggregating signal. So they have bunches of little tiny guys, and then they have the great big ones, and the big ones have a lot of power and a lot of bandwidth, so they wouldn't get rid of them immediately, but it's a bandwidth versus coverage area.
I think it's going to evolve over time. But I think for now, it's going to use those large towers as well. And work together as a network. I think over time, it'll evolve into something different, and it'll be maybe something that we can visualize right now. But I think we're going to see a lot more of these shorter nodes on power, on existing poles or new poles. There's going to be more of them. It won't be as tall and monstrous as the large ones are. It's just, we don't see them up and down our right-of-way. That'd be a big difference. Okay. The, our proposed ordinance, so we're amending in chapter 13, it's our existing right-of-way ordinance. So we are creating specific standards just for small cell networks with this proposed So this will not apply to all our other right-of-way users. We are, we are going to be coming up with a separate right-of-way ordinance that would kind of create a revised right-of-way ordinance for those users as well, so that would encompass pretty much everyone else. I think there's a existing government code 283, which applies to all our, all our, all the franchises allowed in the state, so we'll be kind of following those rules at the state So in the ordinance, we establish the, we define a purpose, the applicability of the ordinance, we provide definitions, we certainly reuse some definitions from the state law. State law did also leave out a lot of words that should have been defined, so we added the ones that we felt were applicable and needed, so you apply the ordinance. Sets up our application and permit process. This will allow the carriers to use the right-of-way, establishes those fees, which I mentioned for, we are asking for the maximum allowed, so long. As far as the requirements go for installations, we are going to have some rules about color, spacing, size and height. A lot of that will apply in our design districts. As far as the color, there's some rules about camouflage and stealth-looking facilities. We are going to work through some of the spacing issues, size and height. It also talks about where you can do it in residential commercial zoned areas. We want to make sure that we have ADA compliance, so it will be with ground equipment. We want to make sure it doesn't block accessible routes and things like that nature in our And also sets up provisions for repair and those facilities must start installing. So permit process, we mentioned before, the license agreement will need to be initiated first through city staff. That's currently where we're, I guess, headed with that. We would not go to council. We would establish those and be approved at state level. It establishes when a permit is required, and that'd be to co-locate or to locate on the poles. By state law, they can permit up to 30 nodes on one application. It also establishes some rules about when a permit is not required, which will be small changes in the future, there's some limitations on the size modification, but also allow them to maintain the facilities. It also talks about termination of permits, so that's when these facilities are abandoned and no longer being used, so we have the right to revoke the permit, and we would have to remove those facilities. Establishes our rights to inspect during construction, also after construction, and also there's inventory rules about the equipment, with some of the fees applied to the inventory of the equipment. Establishes our liabilities, guidelines, duties, responsibilities, mercy contacts with these users.
Do you want to talk about this?
Sure.
So we had a short timeframe, as you know, to put this ordinance together, so we're constantly reviewing it. We've gotten some comments, and we decided some of them pointed out some scrivener errors that we made, so we wanted to get those changed. The first one, the first change we're going to make to C2, it was in the wrong place, and we had, we changed, it was basically a scrivener's error, so we're fixing that. The height, we're taking out the first sentence, as we think it's addressed in state law. We have some tower height limitations in our ordinance already that would, would address that first sentence, so I think we're covered with that. It's just what it would look like clean. Also, this was a scrivener's error, it just basically reiterates state law. And then during the review, staff determined that actually we don't need the restrictions on ground equipment at all, so we were recommending taking that out. So tonight, if you do choose to approve this ordinance, I would ask that you make the motion to approve it with the changes that were just shown to you right now in workshop, so that the ordinance that's adopted has these changes in it. Also, we may be bringing more changes to you as we are constantly reviewing this ordinance. It's a bit overwhelming because of the volume, but we are continuing to review it.
Certainly, council, this is not our normal process. We like to bring an ordinance to you, get your input, take that into consideration, rewrite it, bring it back. Unfortunately, the state has preempted you, and we're not able to do that.
Is there any other questions?
Do we have anything? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on into the review of the agenda. Don, do you have anything else on that?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we'll go to the review of the regular session. We'll start with the invocation by Councilman Gilmore, pledge to the flags by Councilman Ferguson, and proclamation, and Councilman Gilmore's going to be doing that. Next up, public hearing, Adam B.
Mayor, council, this is an interesting request. So with Skyline Trapeze, they are interested in purchasing property by Lewisville, where they would build an indoor facility, but during the timeframe, while they're in the process of obtaining the land and getting the finances in order, they do want to function outside at an existing facility, it's called the Zone Action Park. And so we have taken that through DNC, and they did recommend approval with some limitations which are listed in your comments. And I do have a couple of letters, one from a person who's actually taking the classes, and another from a business that was located beside them in another city, and they got a number of people that came and affected their business because of the location. So I'll just pass these around and take a look at those.
I do have a question for the attorney. Will I still have the legal authority to say, "Not my circus, not my monkeys"?
No.
I did have some questions when I first, when I first heard about this. I know that they have, they've attempted this in two other cities, and both times the permits were eventually not renewed. So my question is...
What was the reason?
I went back and looked at a revised article in the LTJ and saw the reason for the, for the non-renewal. So I'm just wondering, what, do we have any guarantees that we're not going to end up with being the third?
Oliver Richard talked, he actually talked to the other city, so he can explain that to you, but there are not necessarily any guarantees, so...
I did reach out to the city of Addison and spoke with staff there, and they spoke fairly highly of this business. They were very cooperative. They, the good thing is there were no problems, no incidents, no complaints. It was just a factor of not being able to move forward with a permanent facility, and a lot of time that's related to financing. And we're hoping as, as the business grows, they'll be more financially stable so that they can establish a permanent facility. I think one of the differences, too, at the previous site, they did not have restroom facilities or parking where they do here. So we are making progress, and the SUP is a very good tool that allows staff to monitor the business, to see if there's any complaints, to see if there's any other issues. And if they ask for a renewal for a second year, of course, those will all be factors, we'll look to see how it operates. And if they're still unable to start the permanent facility in two years, then it will require another SUP application, we can kind of look at the situation at that time. But staff is encouraged by the very positive response from the one person that took the class, and actually, the business, I believe, is one of our restaurants, and they were very excited about, about them. So I know staff's interaction has been very, very professional and very pleasant the last couple of months that we've been working with.
Thank you. Okay. Bob, do you have anything else on that?
That's fine.
Okay. Down to consent agenda, item one, item two, item three, item four, item five, item six. Never been a regular hearings, item seven. Any questions? Never been nine.
This mayor was presented to the council back in July, so there have been no changes since that presentation.
Okay. Now we're down to item ten. Do you have anything else for workshop?
I might mention, it's not on your posted agenda, so I can't really have you go out as a group, but the chief does have your new SWAT vehicle parked outside on the west side, so if you glance out and see it, that is your...
Good. Okay. We'll go to recess, and we'll reconvene at 7 o'clock in the council chamber. Call connects session of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum present. First item of the business is, will be the invocation given by Councilman Gilmore, followed by the pledge to the American Texas flags by Councilman Ferguson.
I'm in.
Join me in the pledges to our flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Lord of all the heavens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Now we have a proclamation presented by Councilman Gilmore.
I'd like to come up, Alexis Meyer, from the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
I'd like to read this proclamation, if you don't mind. Lots of whereases, proclamation speak. So whereas in the United States, an estimated 1,237,824 people are living with or are in remission from leukemia, lymphoma, myeloma, or other form of blood cancer, with an estimated 171,550 new cases expected to be diagnosed in 2017, and whereas leukemia, lymphoma, myeloma, and other blood cancers will kill an estimated 58,320 people in the United States this year alone, and whereas the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, LLS, exists to find cures and ensure access to treatment for blood cancer patients, and whereas LLS maintains an office in North Texas to help improve the quality of life for blood cancer patients and their families in the state of Texas, and whereas the state of Texas is similarly committed to the eradication of these diseases and supports the treatment of blood cancer patients and their families, and whereas the city of Louisville encourages private efforts to enhance research funding and education programs that are saving lives, not someday, but today. Now, therefore, I, TJ Gilmore, councilman at the city of Louisville, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2017 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month, to educate citizens about the need for finding cures and creating access to treatments for all types of blood cancers, to get involved with LLS, from participation in fundraising campaigns, to making a donation or volunteering, and to fund lifesaving research to advance breakthrough therapies for blood cancer patients. Proclaim this the 7th day of August of 2017. Thank you so much, and we'll hand you that.
Thank you very much.
And thankfully, with the efforts, you know, we've had a couple of wonderful stories here in our own city, where our folks have come back from that, and it's a, it's a wonderful thing, so it's good to, good to see. In fact, our chief Tittle here is, is a great example. So do you like to add a few words?
Sure. Well, I would just, first of all, like to thank the city of Louisville. Y'all take, y'all took a really early start on this, which is awesome. And we're just into August, and we're already moving in to declare the month of September Blood Cancer Awareness Month. LLS serves as both an advocate for patients, their families, and a support system. We also fund the top research programs and treatments for patients as well, so this helps raise awareness within cities and in turn helps us take down cancer. So thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Alexis.
Thanks.
Now we're down to item D.
Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for outdoor commercial amusement on 8.208 acres located at 1951 North Summit Avenue. Skyline Trapeze is proposing to set up a temporary trapeze training facility while it constructs a permanent location in Louisville. PNC recommended approval with a vote of 6 to 0 with the following three conditions: One, the proposed chair length shall be a minimum of six feet in height; Two, the promoted use is limited to classes with a maximum of 10 students at one time, as described more specifically in Exhibit B of the ordinance; and Three, the SUP be valid for one year, at which time the applicant may request staff approval for a one-time extension for a maximum of one year. The recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption. We have Richard Liddkey, planning director, available to answer any questions, and Mackenzie Miller from Skyline Trapeze also available to answer any questions.
Okay. We'll open a public hearing. Any comments? Do you have any cards? Nope? Okay. Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Allies in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve?
I approve the SUP ordinance with the three conditions set forward.
The Senate, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay.
This is, this is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for an outdoor commercial amusement on an 8.208 acre lot, legally described as Lot 1R Block A, Lake C, Bowlin Edition, located on the east side of Summit Avenue, approximately 290 feet north of Justin Road at 1951 North Summit Avenue, in Zone Light Industrial District, providing for repealer, severability, and penalty, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Allies in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
The leaders citizen forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. We have no cards submitted.
Okay. Item F.
Consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For citizens to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. We have no cards submitted.
Okay. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Thanks. We have a motion and a second to approve. Allies in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Regular hearings, item seven.
Consideration of an ordinance amending chapter 13 by creating a new article regulating network providing... network providers' access to public rights of way in an ordinance amending Section 2-201 Fee Schedule by adding fees relating to said use of the public rights of way. On June 10, 2017, SB 1004 was signed by the Governor of Texas to allow small cellular network facilities, small cell, in the public right-of-way effective September 1, 2017. The proposed ordinance establishes a permanent process and aesthetic requirements and construction standards for small cells and authorizes the city engineer or designated to enter into license agreements with the right-of-way user. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. We have Assistant City Engineer Jeff Kelly available to answer any questions, and we also have Amandas Dyer, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name, representing Crown Castle to speak before the council.
Okay. Just the first question, is that it? Okay. If you can give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Councilors. My name's Amandas Dyer. I'm the government relations manager for Crown Castle. My address is 1220 Augusta Drive, Houston, Texas 77386. Crown Castle is the nation's largest provider of shared wireless infrastructure. We are the nation's leader in owning and operating cellphone towers as well as small cell networks. We've been working with city staff for the past two years, actually, and specifically Mr. Ferris and his office, on deploying 20 small cell nodes in the city right-of-way. Obviously, we've been working on the state law as well, and in the interim between the time we first discussed our small cell network with Mr. Ferris, the state law passed. So, we understand that the city and city staff, I'd like to commend them on doing a great job of really coming up with an ordinance in such a timely manner. As you know, as you heard in the workshop, the state law goes into effect on September 1st. So, I did have a chance to review, and we did have a chance to review the proposed city ordinance over the weekend. I provided some comments and some concerns in certain sections that maybe didn't necessarily comply with the requirements in the state law. It sounds like, coming out of the workshop, that a lot of those issues have been addressed at this point. There may be one or two other issues that I think could be addressed, such as the city ordinance separation between the poles, the required separation, but I think that's something that we can work on with city staff, Mr. Ferris's office, with Ms. Barron and her office and Public Works to address those issues. But I am very encouraged by, and I would again like to commend, city staff for working so hard. It is a very short timeline to get this city ordinance in place to comply with state law. And I'm happy to take any questions. I know some questions were raised at the workshop.
Do you have any questions?
Answer any questions.
We don't have anything right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
Is this a public hearing or is it just the ordinance? Okay. I move to approve the ordinances as set forth in the caption above with the changes discussed in workshop.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending Chapter 13, Streets, Sidewalks, and Certain Other Public Ways and Property of the Louisville City Code by creating a new article regulating network providers' access to public rights of way, providing for repealer, severability, a penalty, and effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Allies in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight.
Consideration of an ordinance limiting the propositions for the...
Sorry, Mayor, there were two ordinances. I apologize.
Okay.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter 2, Section 2-201 Fee Schedule, to add fees relating to network providers' access to public rights of ways, providing a repealer, severability, and effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Motion to approve. Okay. Second. Allies in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are we covered on that now? Okay. Thank you. Item eight.
Consideration of an ordinance limiting the propositions for the Louisville City Charter Election. The Texas Legislature recently passed Senate Bill 957, which provides, among other things, that propositions for local political subdivisions cannot use numbers to identify their propositions, but instead must assign a unique letter of the alphabet to each local proposition. The proposed ordinance ensures that propositions for the upcoming city charter election are in compliance with the new law. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance as stated in the caption.
Okay. Any cards on this one? Okay. We have a motion to approve? And a second? Any discussion? Okay. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, limiting the propositions for the Louisville City Charter Election and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Allies in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item nine.
Consideration of a reservation authorizing the adoption of the Community Development Block Grant 2017 through 2022 Consolidated Plan. In the 2017 Annual Action Plan, an authorization for the city manager to submit the plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The proposed consolidatory plan and annual action plan were developed with citizen input with a final public hearing before council on July 17th in a 30-day public comment period that ended July 24th. The CBPG Advisory Committee recommended adoption by a vote of five to zero. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the plans as set forth in the caption.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Allies in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 10.
Consideration of a resolution appointing one member to the Board of Managers of the Danko Area 911 District. Danko has requested that each participant in the city vote for one of the candidates for the Board of Managers and advise the district of its selection prior to September 15, 2017. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the resolution appointing one member to the Board of Managers of the Danko Area 911 District.
Okay. Do you have anything on this, Donna? Okay. Okay. Does everybody have any nominations?
I make a motion for the sue, and I don't know if I can tangle them.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Allies in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay. We're down to reports.
Nothing.
Okay. Nothing? Okay. We've got a streak going. Russ?
About the Police Department Open House this Wednesday, 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. We're celebrating our 78th birthday as an agency, so we'd like the community to come out and join us for hot dogs, chips, tours, you name it. Hope to see you there.
Where's this going to be at?
At the Police Department, 1187 West May Street.
Okay. Sounds good.
Can I have a free police car? You said you name it.
We can discuss that.
Just always wanted when I was a kid.
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything to, anything about the like? We'll put you on the spot. Thank you. Gina?
Yes, Mayor, I do have something for you. This August 19th, which is Saturday, 9:30 to 5:00 p.m., we have the Clear the Shelter Event, where all pet adoptions fees are going to be waived, so come out and get another pet, another dog. Sometimes we have hamsters and other things like that. Adoptions, including sterilization, microchip, viral vaccines, rabies vaccines, heartworm testing, city registration, and 30 days of free pet insurance are all offered. This is a great event, and it's a way to celebrate in the newly named Gene Carey Animal Shelter and Adoption Center.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Eric? Brett?
Mayor, nothing.
Okay. CJ?
Mayor, just a quick recap for folks. We have our New Visitors Information Center that's opening, and we have a wonderful area where we're displaying Louisville history. So, if any of the folks who are watching this or out there have home movies, photographs, anything of that nature that they would like to allow the city to make a digital copy of, of course, we will return the original back to that resident. We'd love the opportunity to showcase some of that history at our New Visitors Information Center. That's all I have.
Yes. City Manager?
So, this Saturday is our budget workshop. It will be held over in the Municipal Annex, and it will start at 9:00.
Okay. We'll see everybody there. Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. MCL Grand, we have some, a couple of live performances coming up. George Harris with a stand-up comedy presentation, Quinceaño. On August 20th, and the entire show will be performed in Spanish. Texas Tunes 2017 Concert Series presents what I would call a bonus concert. Walt Wilkins and the Mr. Caros. Also joining them will be Susan Gibson, and both Walt and Susan have been immensely popular with our audiences here in the past, as well as around the state, so that will probably sell out. I would get my tickets if you don't already have it. The date is August 26th. Public events, Keep Louisville Beautiful Garden Secrets Class, Saving from a Rainy Day. This is about rain barrels. It'll be presented on August 17th. Yoga in La Plaza will continue every Wednesday through October, and Acoustic Jam is every Friday night, presented by the Visual Arts League. The last one, by the way, was a songwriter's workshop that was a hugely attended event and some incredibly creative musicians. Art exhibits, we have Fresh Ideas through September 9th in the main gallery, and Make a Statement through September 9th in the North Quarter Gallery. That's it. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor. This past Thursday and Friday, I was privileged to attend the Texas Municipal League Newly-Elected City Officials Orientation Meeting in San Antonio. I must say that I didn't learn very much new, other than I was just reinforced my belief that our city staff does a terrific job of orienting us and the committees and everyone else in how things work. I was continually amazed as the speakers would ask a question of the new appointees or elected officials and say, "You know what this means." And I'd raise my hand, look around the room, and, "Oh, there aren't very many that know that." And it went on and on, so I just really appreciate the staff of the City of Louisville.
Good words.
Thank you.
Counselor? City Secretary? Officer, thanks for your service in the community. We do appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Julie, can you read the rest of it?
In accordance with Texas Government Code Subchapter D, Section 551.072 Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087 Economic Development, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations.
Okay. We'll now go into closed session. Is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
No. Motion, second to adjourn. Allies in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're adjourned.